This meeting is being recorded.
Welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, July 14th, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so just one note. Last few days have been real busy, so some of these agenda items that we're going to get to today, I haven't reviewed like I usually would. So I'm just saying, if there's a moment where I'm reading it as we go, it's just the way it is right now. So fire last night and fire meetings the last few days, so.
Yes, we've been, what is the word?
On an evacuation notice.
Yeah, so I was at a meeting last night and I had to jump and run. My mother-in-law's in the evacuation level two area in southern Deschutes and northern Klamath right now.
Yes, Highway 31.
Yeah, so, okay, just acknowledging that. So at this time, citizen input. Thank you very much for joining us. At this point in time, we do have citizens in the room to speak on a few subjects, so let's go through those. And we have other emails that we can acknowledge also. So at this time, I see Sam Davis can join us, and the topic is fire safety, I see. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. As I noted, fire safety appropriate for this time of the year is my topic. As we all know, we're in the midst of a 400-year drought. We're in the driest period in the whole of the western United States than we've ever seen. We have unprecedented numbers of fires each year. They seem to be increasing in number. We've had fires that have taken out half of Ventura, my old office in California, the city of Paradise, California, where I used to go as a child and get ice cream cones when we were camping. We've had fires in the gorge caused by fireworks. And this isn't going to stop. The glaciers are gone, the snowpack is gone. They started to ration water for the first time in my 17 years here in Tumalo last Wednesday. So there's certain things that I know, obviously, that commissioners can do nothing about, you know, nature, irresponsible use of fire, and things of that nature. But there are a few things that the commissioners can do something about, that I think you should do something about. One is, I don't believe I can think of one reason that we should ever allow fireworks in Deschutes County or in any of the cities to be either sold or used. And I think you should vote to ban fireworks, continue the ban you have in place for the foreseeable future until these droughts are over. Secondly, as I drive around and see all the homeless encampments with people with propane tanks, with piles of wood, with open fires, this scares me to death. You know, my friend was just evacuated from Holmes Road. I think Commissioner Dare had to move some of her horses recently. So, you know, fires are all around us. Bend is not immune to the same thing that happened in Paradise or Ventura. I would have never guessed in rural or urban Ventura where my office building was, it could be wiped off the map by a fire because there just didn't seem to me to be enough combustible material there. But it happens. So Bend isn't immune. So what we need to do is find a way to deal with homelessness. And I believe, and I've sent all three of the commissioners a note on this in the past, an email, to develop a camp, you know, kind of like a KOA campground for our homeless population. Put in fire safety, put in fences around it, put in garbage disposals and sanitation. It will cost money, obviously, and it's going to be difficult to do. But look at the downside, you know. First of all, the people deserve to not have to live on Emerson. When we move them off Emerson, we move them to places that are more dangerous. You know, they move out to China Hat. They move out to other places. So, you know, there's a number of reasons we can't build a homeless camp, but let's find a way to build a homeless camp, you know. And this is something I think we need. I think it's something that's doable. We were told we'd never be able to build a homeless veterans camp when we started that. But we're doing it, and shortly we will have people in that. So, sorry, I took more time.
Thank you so much. It's, yep, just trying to control time a little bit. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Sam.
Nick Cotney about river access.
Well, never been to doing this before, talking to you guys, but first time I'll give it a whirl here, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyhow, I live out in Deschutes River Woods, and for years, you know, we've been out there told there's no river access out there. And then one of the old timers out there said there actually is easements out there. So being computer challenged as I am, I had my son do some work for me, and he found these maps, and he actually talked to somebody at the county, and I should have asked him more questions against who he talked to and stuff. But these maps, they actually show there's easements on here, and the easements are current. So my question is, can we get some signage or something out there? Because trying to go out there, even with the maps, I'm not sure where these easements are. And I was wondering if we can get signs just to show us how we can get down the river because there are, there's two easements down there from the road down, and then there's a 20-foot easement along the river. So my question is, can we just get a sign down there that says, this is the easement, and this is where we can go down there so we're not, you know, in the wrong spot and raising problems with the homeowners there, so.
Well, and I'll acknowledge that, yeah, we received your email on that, and it's really good to see, you know, the documentation of that original plat. You know, I asked for a little bit more information about, let's confirm, because if you go to dial, it doesn't have those on there the same way as those maps. So I'll acknowledge that, yeah, that's a thing we can look into.
Okay, thank you very much.
I actually forwarded it on to Nick LeLac from Community Development and copied Chris Dode because he's our road signage person. And, yeah, so I got a response back. And thank you for coming this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is another one of the, we have been discussing a natural resource stewardship position within, within the county, and this is, you know, this kind of easement is one of the things that that kind of person could actually, you know, keep better data about and, and manage more. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Next, Kathy Cotney.
Thank you for having me again today, and I'm here to speak on fire safety, the same as the gentleman earlier. I feel very strongly that we need to ban the fireworks, at least follow the cities that are doing it. My concern is that if we don't do that, first of all, we don't have any leverage if there are fireworks shot off. And second of all, all the people that are within these areas that it's banned, they can now go out in the county and shoot them off. And I'm also concerned, legal and illegal, they're both extremely dangerous. If you get a fountain in there, it could shoot five or six feet in the air. When I drove in here, one of the parks right here has two huge dead pine trees in it. What if someone went in, you know, somewhere like that where we've got dead pine trees, you shoot it off, it only takes a spark. And my other concern is, and listening to people who have family members fighting these fires, we are overtaxing everyone. And we certainly, with already having a council member right on the edge of this fire, we don't want to tax it any more than we can. And I feel like it's, it's just vital that as a county, we take this stand, whether we ban it permanently. I'm just concerned right now with following what the cities are doing and keeping, doing what we can to prevent. I'm in total agreement on some of these other ideas, but I'm not here to address that today, and I'll send you my thoughts on, on fire safety later on. My concern is the fireworks ban.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy.
And Greg Bryant.
I'm Greg Bryant from Deschutes River Woods, and it's about the fire, fire ban. Like to have fireworks banned to be similar, at least to what Ben's got, I believe theirs until August the 31st, I believe it is. And then I'd like to have a ban on almost all fires because even warming fires can get out of hand. But I know that that'll probably be the harder part of it, but at least fireworks, come on. Last night, I guess we had a fire in a huddle road. I just don't want this paradise to become white paradise. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go through some topics on other emails we've received. So one request for extending fireworks ban, extending fireworks to save our land, a request for fireworks banned, extend fireworks banned, please permanently ban fireworks. Also, another one, no fireworks. Fireworks banned for Deschutes County with this severe drought, please ban fireworks. Please ban rural fireworks through the end of the season. Please extend fireworks banned. Fireworks are unsafe. Fireworks banned, please. Extend the Deschutes County ban on fireworks through the end of August. So these are the subjects of these emails. Extend fireworks banned beyond July 9th, and also extend fireworks on Deschutes County, or extend ban on Deschutes County fireworks. And then another one for fireworks banned. So those are all emails we've received recently. These will be in the record if you want to follow up more about who they're from. Their information is in the public record. There's a common topic there. So that, is there anybody on Zoom with a raised hand feature or a phone number we might not recognize for public testimony? Okay, so that is still available to the public. So that's it for our public input on items not on the agenda at this time.
Could I just say, so I just wanted for, for everyone who's been contacting us about, about fire-related issues, I wanted to share. So I've, I've worked for 17 years in, in this community and throughout Oregon on reducing hazardous fuels. So I'm very aware of fire risks, very concerned about these issues, and have spent a lot of time working on them. As, as one of your Deschutes County Commissioners now, I'm very excited to actually have the opportunity to engage on, on another, another side of the issue, the ignition side. And the ignition side does include fireworks, but it also includes a lot of other things. You know, it's some of which you've alluded to today, open fires, debris burning. You know, we can all recall that the two very exciting fires that we had at the end of March were, were ignited from, you know, people who were trying to dispose of yard debris, that they were trying to get out of their yard to make their, their properties more fire safe in the first place. So I, I believe that we should, in the next, you know, in the coming months, in the next year, take a comprehensive look at what the ignition sources are for wildfires in our community, and, and try to take a comprehensive approach to addressing the, you know, understanding the risk associated with each of those, and then trying to do what we can to manage those risks.
And I wanted to say that actually, to quote the Forest Service, 85% of fires are started by humans. It wasn't 60, it wasn't 80, it was, according to the Forest Service, 85%. And I really feel that today we should extend that ban. You know, when you saw on the news that people were lighting fireworks in the city of Bend, the people reported it, nothing was done, unfortunately, because there was no fire started. And yet, that was the rule. And I do believe with the situation, the precarious situation, that we in Oregon now face because of all of the fires that are going, and we're, we're not even into August yet. I would really appreciate having that ban extended to the end of August at this moment in time. And then, of course, we can do a comprehensive. But considering it's a 400-year drought, and the cumulative effects of that drought are incredibly significant, even a couple of years ago when we had, what was it, five feet of snow that never melted, it was not actually in the right location for this, for the water system. So, anyway, I'm, I would think that today would be appropriate to extend our original ban that expired on the 9th of July.
So do we want to take that up as a business item at this time? So you were proposing the extension of the ban?
Right.
I did have some information. One of the nonprofit organizations selling fireworks, when we did do the ban, it basically stopped sales, and truckloads of fireworks were returned to the retailers, which was very empowering to understand that. A lot of sales did not happen this year. Some did, but a lot of sales did not happen also. So we are in a spot where any ignition is a bad ignition at this point in time. I know that there's people just begging for a fireworks ban, thinking that that's a real action item here. I would like to keep it at that, thank you for the terminology, the ignition level, and think about all fires. And so a fireworks ban, I mean, I'm not supportive specifically, but the flip side is, I'm supportive of community safety, fuel reduction, and, you know, not starting fires in any form at this point in time. Yeah, I don't know where that leaves us, as I say.
I, I would like to understand better what the relative risks are among all these potential types of, of human-caused ignitions before we clamp down extremely hard on just one of those. I, you know, yeah, if, if the probabilities say that, you know, open burning or, or, you know, burning debris piles is actually a much greater cause of wildfires in communities than, than fireworks, which I don't know, but which I'd like to know, then, you know, we don't want to squeeze one, you know, one potential ignition source that it's a lower risk than another. So I, I would like to look at, I'd like to deal with this issue more systematically and take a, do a comprehensive risk analysis, and then take some serious actions on, on whatever the, whatever the key opportunities are.
Well, and along the line of serious actions, you know, I'm prepared today to really start the process, and we have ARPA dollars available to set up, you know, managed camping. I mean, whatever that looks like, let's put direction to it today. Get people out of those really dangerous situations, you know, for their own good and for the good of the community. Offer support. And we talk about, you know, open burning and, you know, food, food, you know, fires for food preparation, but also, you know, trash and waste, you know, really putting that whole project together. So, as I say, I just don't conclude that fireworks, we had a fireworks ban, it was very optimal when we did it, and we did struggle with that from Monday to Wednesday before the 4th of July. So as I say, I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's the place I'd like to go at this time. Comprehensive view of this is exactly what we need to do. The seriousness of being resilient to community wildfire spread, you know, there's hope for any property to be able to be resilient to the fire activity, but it takes time. And every spring and fall, fuel reduction efforts, defensible space optimization is the key.
Okay, I want to go on the record that I am for the ban. Apparently, the community did not hear that a Redmond fire truck burned up right before we finally initiated the ban. It burned up on that Tuesday when that fire started. 25 flights were diverted from Redmond Airport. This is not what we need for our community. We are now going to be having, what, two summer, two months of smoke, possibly, if we don't get things under control. It's the message, it's clearly the message that we have a ban on fireworks, but you know what? That means everything else. People, be aware, be cognizant of how dry things are. And I, you know, sure, it's going to need a study, but oh my gosh, how long is that going to take? I feel like this is clearly a message that we should be giving now to our 195,000 people that live in Deschutes County that are clearly being impacted by our dangerous 400-year drought. So please have the minutes, so record my personal and analysis of this situation. I really think that we need to do something more. Of course, I'm the one that's had the fire go around my house before. I have lived it. Three people died in that fire. 359 homes burned to the ground, just like Sam was talking about his old, his building where he worked at, I believe in Ventura County. I mean, you would never believe that, that, I think was probably the Thomas Fire you were talking about. That took out so much. It was such a huge fire, and things burned. And then, of course, they had the mudslides after the burn, and what, 20-some people died in that. So this is not a time to, like, okay, let's wait a couple of months to study the issue. I think a clear indication from our board is important. And, you know, if the other two commissioners don't want to do that, I strongly suggest, please, community, really be smart. 85% of the fires start from you. They, you know, and then again, probably, you know, I always thought it was the lightning and the thunder, and that was the problem, but no, it's really, it's, you know, in most cases, it's man. And, you know, how did the Grandview Fire start? There wasn't any lightning Sunday afternoon at 1:30. That started. How did the fire start yesterday on Darlene Way? Okay, that's another issue. So please, please be incredibly careful. The number of trees that I see that are ignitable because they are dead is rather significant out there. Extending fire-free like we did last year, I really felt like that was an important stand to take, and thank God we did it. And now, you know, it was even better this year. It cost the county half a million dollars. Oh my gosh, what are these fires costing? Half a million dollars, and it's, it's unbelievable. So please, I've heard from all the head fire people, somehow the messaging yesterday wasn't quite getting out there correctly to my community, and now, you know, now we have two fires on our news. So, yeah, let's not do a ban today, guys. Let's wait.
Well, it, yeah, so in response, this is serious business. You know, we had a community effort in our neighborhood, and I was going door-to-door. I went to neighbor's house and helped clean up this spring. So, I mean, this is serious business, and it's all year long. So, I mean, the, the passion and the energy on fuel reduction, defensible space is bar none. So, you know, we do need to remember that. And, yeah, just don't go down this one path, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just say again, I want us to really understand what the ignition sources are that pose the greatest risks to our community, and to understand that through data and analysis. And then I want us to take very serious actions to, to address those potential ignition sources. And I do not feel like I have that data at this, at this time.
There's a pickup truck load of needles being delivered to the transfer station south. You know, I was behind the pickup truck today. People are doing that right now. I mean, and just getting the needles out of the gutters, all the basics, that three- and five-foot footprint around your house, plus any other effort. So, yeah, let's leave it there at this time.
Yeah, but you forget when the wind's blowing 30 miles an hour, or 40 miles, or like 70 miles an hour, September 7th, when we were so fortunate. But how many homes did it take out? 4,000 in the state? 4,000 homes. The Lions Head Fire totally went crazy. Actually, on the 5th of September, thank goodness, the Green Ridge was stopped out of Sisters. That fire was stopped. It was unbelievable. They were, they had the capacity to stop it, and yet, you know, the Lions Head Fire went over the mountain, took out more homes. Yeah, it's, you know, the wind makes fires a totally different game. And we know today they're going to start blowing at 3:00, and they're going to blow till tomorrow night at 11:00. It's going to be red flag warning. That makes five feet rather insignificant when you consider a fire and what the damage and how far the embers can go.
And that's why I'm so glad that Senate Bill 762 passed, which we'll be discussing later today, which addresses things like defensible space around homes and wildfire-resilient building materials, both of which are issues that the county began considering in October 2019, or, or possibly even earlier than that. But it convened that advisory committee in fall 2019, and which we will finally get to see the, the goods, that, you know, the impact from, because the, the state legislature was willing to take action on these issues. So we, we need to think about fire in a comprehensive way. There's fuels concerns, there's things that we can do to make our, our communities more resilient, there's ignition sources, and we should be thinking about all of these things.
Good discussion. Thank you very much. At this time, consent agenda. We have one item for a road name assignment.
Second.
Any other discussion? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. At this time, item number two is an item that was added yesterday, consideration of document, delegating authority for Grandview Fire. So I'll kick this off. I was able to sign this document, and I think we were generally notified, you know, as this was happening, so as other commissioners. So this is acknowledging this signed document. And this is with Oregon State Fire Marshal, delegation of authority. And these are the unprotected lands and structures in the rural county that the, the state fire marshal may be defending, which is wonderful news. This agreement is done just for the unprotected lands of Deschutes County because other fire districts have the same agreement in place also. I see Ed's available. If you want to share the rest of the story, yeah. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ed Keith, County Forester. Commissioner DeBoeun summed it up pretty well. I would just add, it's not unique for the state fire marshal to come to central Oregon or Deschutes County to defend structures, but it is somewhat unique that this particular fire is threatening some structures that are not protected by any fire district. So that's where this delegation comes into play. As Commissioner DeBoeun mentioned, Crooked River Ranch, Cloverdale, Sisters, Lake Chinook Fire Departments all signed a similar delegation of authority, in addition to Jefferson County, who also has unprotected lands at risk due to this fire, the Grandview Fire. So this is something that I haven't been actually familiar with in the past, as far as a document that Deschutes County would sign, but it's, it's due to the fact that there are structures that are at risk, and they are, they did have a structured protection task force in the Holmes Road and Lower Bridge Road areas since we've signed this delegation protecting structures in the event that that fire would come out of Whitechis Creek Canyon and move further to the east and south. So, so it is providing some very important structure protection for those structures in that area that are, that are not part of any of those previously listed fire departments.
So, Ed, you're talking about McKenzie Canyon, are you not significantly by me?
Correct. McKenzie Canyon is included in that.
Okay.
So item number, sorry.
I just, I worry about them, so.
Item number eight was the only kind of item for discussion, talked about evacuation levels. Sheriff's Office, Nathan Garibay as emergency manager, wanted to be clear that the sheriff, sheriff's office has the authority and the responsibility of setting evacuation levels and, you know, implementing evacuations. So we're not giving away that authority. Number, item number eight just refers to communication about proposed evacuation levels to be given to the sheriff. So with that, is there a motion to approve this retroactively?
Second.
Any other discussion? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you.
If I could grab Ed for, for a moment while, while we've got him. Ed, I believe another provision of SB 762 is, says that local governments will need to figure out how to provide protection in areas that are currently uncovered by fire districts, such as the, the area that's subject to this order. Is that correct?
It is correct. Yeah, Senate Bill 762 has a section that addresses currently unprotected lands. It calls for this, I believe, the state forester to work, I think, in cooperation with the state fire marshal to come up with a minimum standard of protection for those lands that are not protected, and then calls upon the counties to work cooperatively with those agencies to come up with a way to meet that standard of protection. So the standard of protection is, is not known at this time. So, the standard of protection is, is not known at this time. Whether that would include a structural department or just something more along the lines of a wildland fire protection district is yet to be determined as it's still early days of that Senate bill passing. So, more to come on what that standard is, but it does have the requirement for counties to ensure that those areas are protected by 2026.
And, and so are you and, and Nathan Garibay and other place, other people putting that in your work plan to, you know, is, is that the way that this will work? Will, will you two or some other county staffers be the, the people who are trying to help kind of shepherd this process along?
Yeah, I think it will include the sheriff's office. I'll be involved. I think we'll need to work closely with the other fire protection districts. I, I don't know that there's going to be a one solution for some of our unprotected lands. Some of them, it may make sense for the adjacent structural fire department to add on to their jurisdiction because they're very small but right next to an existing structural fire district. Some, it may make sense to have a Rainsland Fire Protection District that are, you know, further away from other districts. And of course, working closely with the Department of Forestry as they provide protection for part of our county as well. So, I, I can imagine that a lot of the, the existing jurisdictions need to be part of that discussion because they're probably going to be, be involved in at least part of the solution and possibly extending their boundaries or helping facilitate the formation of Rainsland Protection Associations.
Thanks for, thanks for those initial thoughts.
That was acknowledged at this meeting, you know, with the state, age, the State Fire Marshal Agency Administrator. Yeah, so there was a discussion that was being had at this meeting also.
Good. Good to know what's coming.
Okay. Item number three, switching gears to economic development. So, consideration of signature for a greater, Greater Redmond Area Enterprise Zone Extended Agreement.
Good morning.
Okay, let's switch gears here. Economic development.
Find a way to pay for firefighting.
Ah, yes, there we go. Good, good answer.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. For the record, John Stark, Senior Director, Redmond Economic Development, part of EDCO and the Enterprise Zone Manager for Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone. Before you today is a request for approval for an extended abatement for Nosler, Inc., which is a ammunition manufacturer and other refined products within the firearms industry. Nosler's been in business since 1958. They've been in Bend for decades. They bought some property back in about 2015, 13, 14 era and then started in a facility there where they'd purchased a company out of Washington to manufacture brass. And since that time, they've been reloading cartridges there in Redmond. There's been significant demand for their product, causing a need for further expansion. With building space, they're currently operating near the old bus barn there here in Bend. And the company needs to expand. They need 80,000 square feet. They're in much less than that now. They have 60 acres in Redmond. They plan on making a relocation through that expansion. And so today, I'm before you with an Enterprise Zone request. The Enterprise Zone is a property tax exemption program to help expanding and relocating companies here in Oregon, create jobs. The company employs about 100, a little over 100 people here in Bend, about 30 people in Redmond. In order to access the Enterprise Zone, if you're an expanding company, you have to add at least 10% to your headcount by the first year of exemption, the year following construction. And so, in order to obtain a extended abatement, which is what's before you today, to either receive a fourth and/or a fifth year of exemption, you have to pay certain wages for those net new jobs, exceeding 150% of the most recently reported county average, which totals about $71,393 today. Now, it's a loaded compensation standard. So, those wages have to be at least 100% or above, but the compensation standard includes medical, dental, vision, 401K, holiday, vacation, all of those non-mandatory benefits that are paid to employee through their, through their compensation. But it is monetary. And so, this company exceeds that and plans to with these additional jobs. They plan to hire at least 14 people across a number of different facets of their business, both production, supervisory and management and engineering. And so, they, they meet the minimum requirement of 150% with these jobs. So, they're eligible to receive this fourth and/or fifth year. In Redmond, the city has sort of a unwritten rule that if the majority of those jobs pay over that number, you get a fourth and/or fifth year. If the majority of those jobs do not exceed, then you get a fourth year. So, they award longer-term exemptions for those higher-paying wages over the majority of those jobs. Those wages were certified with City Manager Keith Wacoski and myself before going to the City Council, who unanimously approved this extended abatement for five years a couple of weeks back. And then we have to go to the other zone sponsors, of which Deschutes County and the City of Sisters because they have a portion of the Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone as well. City of Sisters will hear this tonight. And so, the company meets all the minimum criteria. They're going to invest about three and a half, 13 and a half million dollars in new facility and in new equipment. And then, over that period of time, I think the first year, of course, we don't know what future year's tax assessments will be in terms of the millage rate or the changed property ratio, but using the most current data from the current tax rules, the first year of exemption, Deschutes County's apportionment would be just under $10,000 for the first year. And then, you have appreciation on certain items of real property and depreciation on others. It'll depend on time how that calculates out. So, what we have before you today is a request to extend the three-year period, which is an as-of-right, to a five-year, an additional two years of property tax exemption through what we call an extended abatement agreement, which is the document you're approving. We're seeking Board Chair upon approval today of that extended abatement. So, I think I may have covered everything, but if I didn't, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
So, it's exciting to know they already have the land. So, you know, this is, this is ready to go. So, you know, being able to build some capital infrastructure.
Um, two questions, John. Well, one, which I think you covered, but I didn't, I didn't totally catch it. So, did you say that the 14 net new jobs all meet that, all, all meet the, the city criteria that they set for, you know, compensation package or a portion?
No, so it's an aggregated number. So, of the 14, we take the total average across all 14 to get into the program. But Redmond says, right, as the home jurisdiction, if the majority of those jobs exceed the 71,393, then we'll offer five years. If the majority of the jobs do not, we'll offer four. So, we're giving longer terms for those. So, it's a majority of them do exceed that, but not all of them.
At least eight of those 14.
Exactly.
Okay. So, that was the first question. And then, you know, in the budget impact section here, you, you share with us that the county apportionment, apportionment of the abatement is estimated to be about 9,800 a year, which, you know, that's a very modest amount. That seems like a great investment for, you know, for the employment benefits and the investment. But I, I am curious what the, what the total impact is. So, you know, what, you know, between the, the, the abatement for the county and the abatement for the city or other taxing districts, kind of what, what that adds up to?
Give me just a second. I'm pretty good at this math, but I don't do math in public without a calculator. So, I am just running a quick number here. All districts at $18 per thousand, which that number changes, right? So, that's the city of Redmond's millage rate. Sometimes it's 17.9, sometimes it's 18. Now, I also accounted for a changed property ratio, but I wasn't able to subtract. I'm getting into a little bit of technical here, but it's about 125,000 a year. Rough numbers. I'm off a little bit there within 10,000. Why? Because there's a changed property ratio, some of you are familiar with, that applies to building but not equipment. And so, I just, I rounded it up, so.
It's great to just have.
I think I'm close. I think the city of Redmond was about 30,000 and their millage rate's about four. So, the total at $18 per thousand and using that change property ratio, 54.5, again, about 125,000 on an annual basis. Now, the property they have already on the rolls in Deschutes County, this is in the staff report, I didn't cover this, but the property that's already on the roll stays on the rolls. We can exempt that because when they move it within a 30-mile de minimis radius, they, that property stays on the rolls. So, anything they have here in Bend that they relocate to Redmond still stays on the rolls for Deschutes County.
And building, being able to build that capacity in Redmond, I don't know what their plans are, but I mean, there's other spaces that could possibly be available in Bend.
Yes. It's actually going to make some pretty prime property.
Yeah.
Available here in, in Bend.
So, they're going to sell it?
I have not, I think, I'm pretty sure they will. I have not seen, you know, anything that indicates otherwise.
So, this is item for Chair signature for the.
So, I move Chair signature of document number 2021-521, the Greater Redmond Area Enterprise Zone Extended Agreement with Nosler.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Nice to see you in person, John.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have my cowboy hat on today.
Yeah, I wouldn't have recognized you. Well, I would have because of where you're sitting.
I can sign this and send you with.
Yeah, I'll wait for it. Thank you.
Next item, item number four, approval of County Public Health HIV Early Intervention and Outreach Services Program. We don't have a name associated. There we go, okay.
Hi, come on in. For the record, I'm Kathy Christensen. I'm a supervisor within public health in Deschutes County Health Services. And this is Amber Knapp and she is a public health nurse who is doing disease intervention work within our STD HIV programs. And we're here today and thanks for your time. I know you guys have a lot of urgent matters going on with fires. So, thanks for your time today and I'm hoping we don't get kicked off because our Zoom has, we've gotten kicked off a number of times while we're waiting. So, hopefully that doesn't happen. So, and the reason we're here today is this is, we are in our third, our fourth year of the EISO grant, the HIV EISO grant that we've come to you guys every year for approval. And we, this grant, of course, is HIV funding and it's part of End HIV Oregon campaign and goals. But also, a huge part of this grant is to help with STD cases, especially those more complicated cases. Because if we can do more intervention and prevent those, we're also going to prevent new HIV infections. And so, we're really thankful for this grant because it's allowed us to do a lot of work in the community. And as we were talking to the state folks about sustainability and moving forward, which we're now finding out that this grant, this grant funding will go beyond the five years, but we are currently in the five-year grant cycle. So, we, we're discussing the number of STD cases that we're seeing, especially this year, but it started kind of mid-year last year and has been increasing even more this year. And an example is that January through June of 2020 and actually 2018, 2019, we had around 30 cases of gonorrhea. January through June of this year, we've had 90 cases of gonorrhea. Gonorrhea is, we're concerned about gonorrhea because there is antibiotic-resistant gonorrhea being seen in the world and we're kind of on a last really good treatment for gonorrhea. So, that's very concerning. The other disease that we're really concerned about is syphilis. And yes, syphilis is alive and well in Oregon. And this time, in the first six months of last year, we had seven cases of syphilis and the first six months of this year, we've had 17. And we actually have worked more cases than that, but some of the cases that we have worked have ended up, the folks have been here, but actually, the residence is in a different county. So, they, those, once we worked them, they were then transferred to the other county. So, we, the EISO program has approved us to have another public health nurse too, to work doing STD cases because Amber is kind of maxed out right now as much as she can do. We take every syphilis case incredibly serious and we work very, very hard to find every potential infected person. And so, it just takes a lot of time. And so, this other position, we're also a tri-county grant and so, we're helping out the other counties with cases. So, with this new position was also help tri-county-wide because we're really, you know, very different counties, but what happens within this, within STD HIV, what's happening in other counties really impacts what's happening in our county as well. So, the EISO grant will pay for the position. We just need, and they've already approved our amended budget. We're just asking to be able to add this FTE to be able to fund this position.
Can I ask how you measure the, the impact of your program? Or how do you evaluate, you know, kind of like, are we, are we doing a good job? Like, is it, you know, we, is it, do you have things, metrics like, you know, we, we administered this many tests this year? Or, you know, we contact traced this many people? Or, you know, how do you, like, how do you know how well you're doing? I mean, you know, clearly, that, you know, the number of cases going up indicates a need for the, the services, but how do you know how well you're, you're providing those services? And, and, you know, and recognizing that you, you clearly don't have enough people to do, you know, everything that you want to do, but how do you measure, you know, what you are doing?
Yeah, so, this is, you know, this is federal funding that we're receiving. It comes to the state and then down to the county. And so, yes, for anything associated with HIV, we are monitoring everything we do. So, we actually do, we have reports that are due to the state on a quarterly basis. So, one of the things that I like a lot about this grant is there is a lot of emphasis on referrals. So, if we're working with somebody who has syphilis, we actually document what kind of referrals we made. Did we make a referral to mental health? Did we make a referral to drug and alcohol treatment? Did we make a referral to other medical services? So, we have all of that data. We have data on how many contacts that we, that the person said they had, how many of those contacts we were able to be able to get a hold of and whether they were tested, whether they were treated. We keep data on almost everything we're doing. And we'd be happy to share that data with you.
Kathy, since it does say HIV or early intervention, can you tell me how many HIV individuals we have in Deschutes County at this time?
Um, you know, that, that fluctuates, but I think we have about 300 folks living with HIV in Deschutes County.
But it, it also sounds like this grant, I, I mean, but while the, this specific grant might be targeted at HIV, there's, you, you sort of have a comprehensive approach to sexually transmitted illnesses, so.
Correct, right. And I think, you know, they're seeing, I mean, it's all, if a person is at risk for syphilis, they're also at risk for HIV, correct? And so, it's the state's way of being able to support the STD work in the state. And at year three, they had already seen a lot of success in the state with these funds. So, that's why they're already planning to continue them beyond the five years.
Thank you. So, could you put in a little bit of the financial together for me? So, we talk about a 1.3 million unspent, 300, or yeah, 371,000 unspent of a 1.3 million. And, and then the timeframe of the five years you're referring to. And, and then the timeframe of the five years you're referring to, are, are, is that, are we at the end of a five-year effort? Is that what you're saying?
No, we are, so this is a calendar year grant, and so, we're in the middle of the fourth year.
Fourth year, okay.
And so, every year, we submit a budget, and they approve the budget, and then that gets added on. So, like, at the end of this year, we'll submit a new budget, and whatever the budget amount is, will get added to the 1.3 million dollars. And so, it just keeps increasing every year when budgets are approved. But we are underspent in the funds that have been approved because of vacancies, because of timing. Sometimes the grant gets, um, approved, but then it takes us a while to recruit and actually get somebody in the position. So, it's just, of the four years so far, um, the three and a half years, we've just had these vacancies or laps between the budget and the approval and actually being able to spend the money. Does that make sense?
Understood. And then, so this FTE is a, a permanent position for this effort?
We're asking for this to be limited edition till the end of the grant.
Okay.
So, that would be through December 31st of 2022. And then, uh, we can reassess when we know for sure have something in, um, from the state that says what the funding will be going forward.
So, uh, that, yeah, limited duration, but it, it may have a future also.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to understand that concept.
Go ahead.
I was just acknowledging that concept, that, and limited duration, but it could be longer.
And Commissioners, typically with limited duration, when the time limit comes up, either the department needs to ask for additional time, um, or to change the position to regular, or the position goes away, but it's kind of a good placeholder or a way to sunset a position.
And then, when we say unspent dollars, are those dollars that Deschutes County's received? Or dollars that have been authorized by the state that we haven't billed for?
Yeah, that, there are dollars that have been authorized by the state that we haven't billed for.
Yep, okay, good.
So, Kathy, I remember, um, in 19, Deschutes County, um, our STD rates were higher than a lot of other counties. Are we still at the top as far, have you seen a comparison with other counties?
Yeah, so, um, we are not, I, I don't think that we're higher than definitely the metro areas. Jefferson County always has higher rates than we do some other counties like Jackson County. So, we're somewhere in the middle. We're not as high as some other counties, but we're, um, definitely around the state average.
And, and I'm sorry, I think you said this, but these are, these are federal funds in origin? Coming through OHA, or?
Yes, correct.
So, for adding an FTE today, what have we done in the past? As in, have we had this FTE come and go, or are we truly adding capacity now?
It's been different in the past. For a number of years, the STD program was more, um, embedded in the clinic. And so, we had multiple people working in the program, but also were working in the clinic. And so, um, we have now separated ourselves from the clinic, which actually has been good because there's more focus on this, the work that, that is, needs to be done within the STD program. So, I think it's just shifted over the years, and so, this is a new position in the way that we're structured now.
Got it, understood, thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have something, Dan?
Yeah, Commissioner Bone, this is a actual increase of 1.0 limited duration FTE, extending out through, uh, 12/31/2022.
Yeah, okay. And that's what the memo says, okay. So, uh, is there a motion to support?
I move approval to increase, uh, FTE by one, uh, limited duration position, 1.0 limited duration position for the HIV Early Intervention and Outreach Services Grant Program.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in person, almost. Maybe next time you can come over.
Okay.
Now, is the next item what we just did?
Yeah, the next.
Okay, so that was kind of the introduction to the concept, and we basically voted. Well, let's acknowledge the resolution number then, if we want to do that in a motion also.
So, how, how do we do that?
Just mention that, so Resolution 2021-054, kind of formalizing.
Or additional motion.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's another item, it's actually the next item.
Because it's a document number.
Yes.
Uh, I move approval of Resolution Number 2021-054, increasing appropriations and adding 1.0 limited duration FTE within the fiscal year 2021, 2022, Deschutes County budget.
Oh, I do have a question regarding this. It was incorrectly stated on here that this was presented to us on the 12th of July, so the record needs to be corrected. It's actually was presented to us today and then approved today.
So, yeah, the previous item would have been that presentation, and.
Right. But then, yeah, it's incorrectly dated, and I'm going like, well, we didn't have a meeting on Monday, and that's not right. So, I just, for the record.
Nope.
Okay.
No, it just, the permanent record needs to be corrected.
Uh, so the motion's been made, and then did you second it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So, the item number four was so thorough, we, we deduced what item number five should be in the words, so that's good. Okay, so item number six, consideration of signature of Oregon Health Authority Intergovernmental Agreement for Local Public Health Authority. So, this is a, this is kind of the big one, it looks like. Here we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh, look at that, 10 o'clock on a Wednesday. How did you do that, Nahad? Amazing.
Magic. Magic, thank you for having us, Commissioners. As Kathy, I echo what Kathy said earlier, you have a lot going on. Well, we do as a community, and obviously you represent us, so there's a lot going on and many, um, difficult decisions to be considered and made. So, thank you for having us for what I hope to be a very brief exchange. This is part of our annual ritual, basically, that we come to the, uh, come to, um, come in your presence to ask for your approval on intergovernmental agreements that we have with the state, uh, for receiving funds that help, um, support our programs, which range from disease prevention and maternal-child health to school-based health centers, WIC, bioterrorism preparedness, or emergency preparedness, and so on. So, this is intergovernmental agreements, uh, number 169509. It's, um, it's, Cheryl likes me to be precise, so let me mention, it's for 2,800,000, 835,817 dollars. I would have said around 3 million, but I would not judge well with Cheryl. So, this, uh, this amount of money is not the totality of the money that we will be receiving. There'll be additional funds from, um, OHA, but somehow it reflects their fiscal calendar and the timetable that they have. But this is an initial start for supporting, uh, our existing programs. Let me pause and see if my colleague Cheryl has anything to add before we give you the floor.
Sure. The only, uh, additional comment here, Cheryl Smallman, Business Officer for, um, Health Services, would be that we do anticipate an additional $600,000 that will come through, uh, via an amendment or two, so we'll be coming to the board, um, at a later date when those arrive. Everything, uh, is pretty much as we had budgeted or expected, uh, in the fiscal year 22 budget. We did receive additional funds in a couple areas. Uh, the first is for, uh, nurse home visiting. We received an additional 86,000, so that'll help to get that program, um, off the ground this year. And then, WIC received an additional 58,000. That program historically has, uh, spent more than we receive in state funding, so that'll help, um, just offset some of the additional funding that we would have needed otherwise, so. Happy.
Cheryl, you reminded me that I should have introduced myself too. My name is Nahad Sadra Zili, Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. Apologies for not doing that earlier. Okay, Commissioners, we're open for any questions, comments. I also have two of our, uh, three managers here in case you would, uh, give like more details on any of these.
I'll acknowledge that, so the program elements is kind of the way it's categorized. These are the efforts that the state is asking us to do and that we offer to be able to do as the local public health authority. So, just looking down the program elements list, is there anything that jumps out that is a, kind of a, uh, a change, uh, you know, adding or reducing capacity that jumps out in the big picture? You know, just kind of, yeah.
We heard about the WIC, is there, is there anything else?
I would just, um, echo the nurse home visiting program. And Pam is here on the line, should you have any, um, questions specific about that program, but we did receive 86,000 dollars to, um, help launch that program this year.
Okay. So.
Is that for people that have babies that you're going to follow up on? Or is it another program?
Hi, Commissioner, this is Pamela First, and Public Health Program Manager. That money can be used for any of our nurse home visiting programs, Babies First, Cocoon, Nurse Family Partnership, or our newest program, Family Connects. I think the intent of the state was to add money to all the local public health programs because Family Connects will be starting this year across the state. But we can use that for the dedicated, um, FTE, the nurse, the actual nurse home visitors that do that work, and yes, most of that is focused on new mothers, um, with babies.
I see your audio is working today, so this is good.
Yes.
Moving forwards.
Much better, much better today, thanks.
So, I'm, I'm still just trying to understand all the administrative structure around this. So, Nahad or Cheryl, is this the main agreement that we have with OHA? Or is this just one of multiple? You know, I, uh, the behavioral health folks said, yeah, we have a few very large OHA agreements, and, and, you know, that, so I was, when I was trying to figure out, like, okay, we saw one a few months ago, and now we're seeing another one. But, uh, for, for the public health side, is, is this kind of the primary? And then there's some other smaller projects? Or are there multiple, uh, substantial-sized agreements?
Good question. This is, uh, the primary, and there are smaller, uh, contracts or smaller programs from there.
Thank you.
Okay, well, is there a motion, support?
I, I move that we, uh, that we approve, uh, and sign, uh, OHA Agreement Number 169509, the intergovernmental agreement for financing local public, our local public health authority.
I'll second.
So, it says board and chair in different spots here. Is this a single su, single signature or three?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it says it in both ways, so.
Okay.
Right above, it says chair signature is, is what Dave just pointed out.
Sorry, I'll revise that. Move that we approve chair signature of OHA number, Agreement Number 169509, IGA for financing our local public health authority.
Great.
So, the document then should be corrected when it says, um, requesting board approval? Or I guess we have to prove it for you to sign it, right? Is that the story?
Yeah, well, it doesn't, uh, you just.
Could just say.
Yep.
It could have said, uh, board approval and chair signature.
Okay.
Okay.
Second that motion.
Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners, and just heads up, so, um, we don't look, uh, perhaps disorganized, there will be additional, uh, agenda requests with relations to COVID funds, which we learn about every day because they are made available to us, as well as IGA amendments or additions that will be coming, as we alluded to earlier. So, thank you in advance for your patience.
Well, and I'll acknowledge that, this is the, uh, end of a, or the beginning of a biennium, so the end of the last, but the beginning, and we see this. It'll be three months later, and six months later, all of a sudden, there's just big changes or, uh, addendums and, uh, agreement changes. So, understood, there'll be a whole bunch of these.
And then.
Thanks for acknowledging that, thank you.
Yeah, and that, that, uh, public health modernization package that came out of the legislature, I, I'm guessing that, that's not reflected in, in this agreement, and there'll be new stuff.
Uh, yes, we anticipate, um, with, um, state's fiscal, um, cycle, which is, I think, October, since it resembles the federal, uh, cycle, we're going to get some, um, clarity around the funding that will be made available to the counties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Item number seven, Full Faith and Credit Obligation Refunding Proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. I'm on page 208 of the packet. Uh, it actually says item number six, but I think there was a revision.
Oh, yeah, we, we had updated the agenda, yep.
And the title, the subject here is, uh, consideration of refunding of our Series 2012 Full Faith and Credit Bonds. Uh, the county has a number of outstanding bond issues at various rates of interest. When bonds are issued, the terms of the, of the issue include a date in which the time the bonds can be paid off early or refinanced. This is referred to as a call date. In 2012, the county issued its series, uh, issued a series, Series 2012 Full Faith and Credit Funding Obligations. These bonds are callable on December 1st, 2021. The county can refund the bonds with tax-exempt debt beginning on September 2nd, 2021, which is 90 days ahead of the call date. The 2020, the 2012, 2012 bonds were issued to refund the county's Sirius, Series 2003 bonds, which were issued to finance the construction of this building. The Lapine Service Center, the county warehouse, storage buildings for the Fair and Expo Center, sewer system improvements for the Lapine Sewer District, solid waste facilities, improvements to the county sheriff's radio system 911, and various property acquisitions, remodeling and infrastructure projects. There's approximately 12 years remaining on the term of the 2012 bonds. In the current interest rate environment, the county can refinance the bonds to achieve a debt service savings. The preliminary savings estimate of refunding the debt for the remaining term is approximately 1.4 million. Side note, we received our proposals back, and we're looking closer to a 2.2 million dollar savings.
2.2?
Per year?
In total, for the remaining 12 years. On the next page of the, um, agenda, you can see a graphic there that demonstrates the savings. The, uh, sum of that, of the top of the bar in the yellow would be the sum of the total savings that would equate to that 2.2 million, so pretty significant. We solicited proposals from 25 commercial banks to provide financing terms in connection with the considered refinance. Proposals were due July 7th. We received seven responses, um, to that proposal. The resolution before you, if it's, if you approve it, gives the county administrator or myself the authority to make all the necessary decisions to proceed with refunding the bonds. And there is a recommended motion on the first page of the packet.
So, what interest rate did we actually get, since you've almost doubled what you originally had projected?
Uh, 1.4% is what we're looking at.
1.4, because of our fabulous credit rating?
That has a lot to do with it.
Yes.
Right, just as a side note, in the bond market, our, uh, we are highly desirable for investors, so.
Wow, that's.
That's where that pays off.
Yes. Another 1.4 mil, well, what'd you say? Another 1.2 million?
2.2 million.
Yeah, well, oh, okay, another 8, um, 800,000 then in savings. Almost a million dollars. Unbelievable. Good. In today's world, that's a good thing.
So, one of the interesting things is, uh, that was, must have been a point in time, I'm referring to 2003, when this first came on. So, building this building and all the, all the decisions, all the projects that are in here. In the 10 years I've been in office, we did do 11 million dollars for the jail expansion, but we haven't just done like a big bulk bunch of projects. And, and I think it's coming around though, right? I mean, we've been kind of preparing for the courthouse and some of the different, the parking needs and north campus, and we're spending money now, but this is, what, 18 years ago? And it just hasn't been that big. And it just hasn't been that big push. And, you know, we're coming into another one of those cycles. So that's interesting when you think of the, you know, you think of a business cycle, but this is kind of the, the growth cycle of Deschutes County. There was a point in time in 2003, these just all needed to be done. And, you know, it's good that we're really, you know, keeping costs under control. But I mean, just, you know, the fairgrounds and all kinds of big things, which was a general obligation bond by the people on top of this. So there was a lot of activity back in the early 2000s also.
And that, and that, and that wave of capital investment got us caught up and ahead of the curve for a little while, and now we're, now we're, now we're looking at the other side of the curve again and, and trying to keep ahead of it. That's a nice historical way of looking at things.
So I move chair signature, see, do we need chair signature? Move approval of Resolution Number 2021-056, authorizing the county's refinancing of its Series 2012 Full Faith and Credit Obligations.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you for keeping an eye on that, looking for that opportunity.
So which bank actually came through at the 1.4?
We haven't formally selected that yet.
Okay, but it's competitive then? That is, okay, thank you.
So at this time, item number eight, American Rescue Plan Act Funding Discussion. And so this is one of those items that I, we had meetings, individual meetings, and I was prepping for yesterday, but I had to just stop. So this is one of those things, I wish I could have studied this so much more yesterday afternoon and today, but I just haven't been able to. But thanks for the preparation.
Yep, you bet. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. And with me today is Dan Emerson. He's the county's budget manager. As we talked about in the past, Dan will be, as we bring on some assistance with this, will be taking on more of a lead role in managing the overall ARPA effort. So for today, in terms of background, just give you a little bit of information. The last time we met was June 21st, and that was when we presented an update to the board on the status of ARPA funding, which included review of the federal guidance and board priorities to establish a framework from which to assist the board in allocating those funds. And as a reminder, the county received half of that $38 million ARPA allocation in May. That was $19 million that we have cash in the bank. And we, we're expecting the balance of the second tranche, the balance of the 38, another 19 million in this actual fiscal year. So we've budgeted, we're not obligated to spend all of the 38 million in this budget year, but we have it obligated, it's appropriated in the budget, which was part of our budget presentation. So the purpose of this agenda item today is to review the project planning list in light of recently updated federal eligibility guidance and establish a funding review protocol moving forward. So since last time, since we met last time, staff has reviewed the detail and updated and new federal eligibility guidance, including the interim final rule. I shared all of that with you yesterday, the compliance and reporting guidance, this document here, and the, there's a list of frequently asked questions. Those were all, those were all updated, or the latter of the two were updated since we last met. They were updated on June 24th. And all of this information is available on the treasury.gov website for anybody that's interested in taking a look at it. Additionally, we have applied those eligibility requirements from all of those documents and the previous information we've received from Treasury to all of the submitted 87 projects. So over the course of time, we've received a total of 87 requests for funding. Generally speaking, and this is very general, but it's helpful to start getting our arms around it, the rules require that eligible expenditures are tied to the pandemic. There has to be a connection to it, and that the expenses fall within the March 3rd of 2021 to December 31st of 2024 timeframe. So as a result of that review, the, there are 49 projects that are eligible as submitted, 11 are not eligible, and 27 projects are yet to be determined. And a list of those 49 eligible projects and a list of the entire 87 projects was provided to the board last night, and I have extra copies here in case anybody would like one. Yep. So in terms of next steps, I'd like to entertain a conversation about the list of eligible projects and consider submitting any, or any of those that were submitted for funding approval. Also, a conversation about how would you like to proceed? Do we do, do we move forward? Since this is a metered, this is a long term, more of a long term funding consideration than cares was, do we want to do this on a time base, like every two weeks? Or would it be more as we have completed steps along the way? Another part of the conversation.
So some of my thoughts is, there's a few items in here I'm ready to pick off and even commit to, which is really nice, because that will put direction to some items. And we can talk about it as a board, you know, what's the vision about the investment we're making? So I would like to possibly start there, you know, kind of keep it simple with the facts that we know, the things we're ready to invest in. And then we'll work our way down, you know, what do we need more information on? And then, yeah, what's the scope of the investments over time? Just like you're mentioning, because a couple of weeks from now, we'll know we did get these dollars out the door, or we didn't have enough information, or they weren't ready for the paperwork associated with it, because there's going to be all kinds of variables in here.
Greg, you said 37 we haven't determined yet. They're, they're.
27.
27, okay, and 11 are not eligible. Okay.
So any other thoughts about proceeding?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree that there are some things on this list that are, that are ripe and that are urgent to our community. But my, my, my only hesitation about starting to deploy funds now is that I, I still don't feel like information about this opportunity has been fully, that, that we haven't done a very comprehensive, public, kind of, you know, inclusive solicitation. So I, I think that there's a lot more to come in still. So I wouldn't want to give those people who are just hearing about this program the impression that, that, that they missed the boat, or that, you know, somehow we didn't, you know, nobody told me, but you're rolling out all these monies for, for, you know, these other projects already. So at the, you know, I, I would support making, making a handful of ripe, community urgent investments now, but also just trying to emphasize, you know, that, that we're only, we're only deploying a, a small percentage of the, of the total funds, and we know that there's, there's a lot more still out there, and we want to, we want to sift the best projects to the, to the top of the, to the top of the pile.
I think I said words very much like that in our joint meeting yesterday, the fact that as soon as we write a check, people are going to start paying attention, and then we will have a lot more requests. So that's exactly the same avenue that you're going down.
Yeah, and so I guess.
Support that, and I agree fully.
Yeah, so in the, in the public kind of, and I, I don't know if Whitney is watching right now, but in the public kind of rollout of information, you know, just to really emphasize that message, these are, these are just a few things that we know are ripe and are urgent. And, and, you know, there, there's leverage opportunities that depend on making investments right now, so that, that we want to make a few investments. But the, the bulk of the money we are, we are holding for, to, to, to be sure that, you know, everyone has a chance to, to send us their ideas and, and, and we get, we get to sort through that pile and, and pull the best, the very best of them.
And of course, if you were watching the news, you saw that the motel in Redmond, that the Bethlehem Inn is converting, it was really gutted downstairs. And when I saw that, I went, oh, my gosh. You know, when you build a house, you have to have your budget first, and you have to have your financing, and it's, you know, I know some, it's a hard game. But that motel will have the capacity up to 88 individuals, and definitely we need to get 88 individuals into some kind of housing. That number was, it looked better than some of the other projects that are coming up. And I had a conversation, I know Gwen called all of us, and it seems like they do really need that 450,000 for that project at this moment in time, so that that building can actually go into operation sooner rather than later.
So we could practice right now, making a decision on expending funds?
Well, yes, I mean.
If you want to make that.
Well, I would move to, I just, because Bethlehem Inn has such a fabulous history, they actually do such a great job. I thought it was a little bit backwards, but you know what? If it's going to get 88 people off the streets, out of the forest, whatever we can do, I think it's important. So I would move that we would spend, we would honor the request of the 4 point, $450,000 to complete the conversion of the 1960s motel into a year round shelter with the capacity of up to 88 individuals per night.
I'm, I'm supportive of that project and, and supportive of, of making an investment there, but that project was, was part of a, or is part of a bundle that was going to be presented to us tonight. And.
So City Redmond Joint Meeting is what you were.
Yeah, the, the, the joint meeting that we're going to have to, that we're postponing to Wednesday. So I want to be mindful that there is a group of service providers focused on Redmond who that were ready to present to us a whole package. And, and so that I have, I have some concern about just picking off the Bethlehem Inn project out of that, out of that bundle without looking at the, the whole bundle right now. And I'm, I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that, but there was, you know, again, a concerted effort to, to get us a comprehensive package of, of options, many of which are extremely important and valuable projects. So. Yeah, Counselor Bullock was even, you know, I was chatting with him a little bit before, before the meeting, you know, before we knew that the meeting was going to be postponed. And, and he said he was, he was ready to put forward, you know, a request to his fellow counselors to allocate 1.4 million to this bundle of projects. And, you know, turned it, and then turned to the, the Board of Commissioners and asked us to make a matching investment, so.
Yes.
That's maybe, that's maybe the, that's maybe the, yeah, we were going to hear about it tonight, and, and, you know, and I was, I was a little bit concerned about the staging of the meeting today and, and tonight, and, you know, getting into stuff today that, that we were going to be covering tonight, but now it's a week from now. But I just want to put that out as, as kind of the range, you know, the, you know, in my mind, the range is from, you know, 450,000 for Bethlehem Inn to a full package of, you know, of committing 1.5 million, 1.4 million to, you know, for multiple projects. And, and that list includes the, the Shepherd's House project in the old, you know, Coyote Ranch Restaurant. It includes Neighbor Impacts, Food Warehouse, and it also includes this managed camp concept coming from Jericho Road. So there's a lot of good stuff in, in that package.
Okay, well, so we do 450,000 today, and then that leaves it at 950,000 if they do the 1.4. So I, I feel like Gwen has to be sitting here and going, oh, my gosh. Putting my heart and soul into this project, it's something that actually has a short timeline in order to get ready for the public, and definitely the public wants to see something happening. So I don't see what the, the problem is of approving this today and, you know, working on the other remaining list next week. It's not like you're saying this isn't a good project.
No, no, I'm just saying that if the other projects are equally worthy and equally urgent, then not considering the whole package is.
Well, the good news was on Sunday, I believe I got an email from Don Senical, who had said, Patty, I have really fabulous news. I'm getting 100,000 for one of his projects, so.
For the, the mobile shower, I mean.
Right, no, I know.
Which is completely different than, I mean.
No, but that's something he'd been asking for from, I've been getting that request for, I don't know, six, eight months, something like that. So I'm, you know, I'm happy that he's finding some funding out there. He said, thank you for talking about my projects, and, you know, so it was good news.
You ready to second it? I will, if you don't, I mean, I'm just thinking, we could talk about this, but.
I, I, you know, I'm not going to vote against the Bethlehem Inn project. But I, I guess I would like, I just want to reemphasize that point that there are, you know, there's, there's a whole package of incredibly worthy and urgent projects that are going to be presented to us, and I, I just hope that making an investment in the Bethlehem Inn project today doesn't make us feel like there's less urgency around the needs in Redmond overall, and that these other projects can't put it, you know, also put it, you know, the Bethlehem Inn is great, but the need is bigger than the Bethlehem Inn, and so we need to not just kind of make the Bethlehem Inn investment and say, mission accomplished, is my, is my, is my worry.
Nobody said that. I mean, Commissioner DeBohn, why don't you just second it?
I'll second it.
And, yeah, nobody has said that. We have a serious problem. We need to get our homeless out of our forests and somewhere where the 195,000 people that live in Deschutes County are safe. People are really feeling the pressure. I am hearing from people all over our county, and they are like, Patty, get something done. We are, we're not, you know, we're not safe.
So this is one line item. It's been motioned, and I did second it. Is there any other discussion? I mean, thank you very much for sharing.
And like I said, I'm 100% in support of the Bethlehem Inn project.
Okay, so call them for the votes. We're going to spend the first ARPA dollars right now, so Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. But as I say, you started off with the concept, now people are going to be like, oh, that's really here, they're really, there, somebody's really writing a check. So this is the beginning of that next wave of engagement by the community about these dollars also, so I'm, I'm supportive of that. So thank you for kicking that off, Commissioner Dare. Is there any other?
Well, I'm really, I'm worried about our chambers and our businesses, and yet with my conversation yesterday with Greg and Dan, they were saying that there's going to be some special, now we have a lot of rules to follow. And so I'm not sure if today we can do anything for those groups.
So I've thought about that. So we heard about the scenarios of a membership organization that didn't have a hard start and stop like other businesses. So there may be an opportunity to define the effects of COVID for businesses that are membership organizations, referring to, you know, gyms with a monthly membership dues. And they, so we may be able to set up a scenario where they can show the, just the decrease in membership during a COVID year. So I would possibly like to just put X amount to that, put direction to it, and, you know, so have people say, okay, how do we define that? How do we make sure it fits the rules? And then go from there. So at this time, maybe just putting a number as a starting point, you know? And, and there's the concept of if ARPA dollars are received and we don't spend them, they could be returned to the federal government, and we do have a couple of years for this whole process. So there, I don't see any downside into saying, you know, X amount for the, you know, if COVID affected businesses with membership slower responding. And, you know, if the money can't all be spent, or if it's, you know, they find 10 organizations, figure out a reasonable amount. So I'm not, I'm not even talking about a specific dollar amount.
We did talk about business assistance, 1.5 million, is I think the placeholder on the schedule, is that not correct?
Well, and I was just kind of going through the concept, okay, well, if we end up with 10 businesses, but we don't want to divide that number probably by that of 10, you know, so I don't know how many businesses we're talking about.
I mean, it could, yeah, we, we, we don't really know what the, what the number of, of, the number of people who are actually willing to go through the, you know, the administrative process to, to put in, throw their hat in the ring is going to be. I, the, the number that, I was surprised how small the number was for the extreme week period.
Yeah.
Amount of money that we.
And this is looking back.
And that one was really, it was really boxed in. You know, you had to show revenue loss for those five days. And, and I do, and similarly, I hope that, you know, for athletic clubs, gyms, that, that. And, and I do, and similarly, I hope that, you know, for athletic clubs, gyms, that, that the requirement to demonstrate revenue loss is, you know, that over a longer, you know, sixteen-month period, you can demonstrate that, that memberships have been, were down, or something like that. But.
What about putting direction to it like this, where, because COIC probably has the, you know, applicants that just didn't quite qualify. Going back to COIC, the effort we've done in the past, asking for, you know, that subset of businesses that didn't quite qualify, and figure out what a meaningful number is also, and then.
Well, I believe the chamber, I know the Sisters Chamber already has their list, you know, the athletic club.
In partnership with, yeah, anybody.
They have borrowed, they have taken their mortgage, you know. And I know, I paid my, we paid our dues. Not that I've been to the gym, I think, in three years. But anyway, but according to Tate, Patty, that was not the standard, is what he told me. I mean, I knew it had to be so tough out there.
That could be the example, you know, this scenario that he, because he contacted me also.
Because he didn't qualify for the last one.
And, you know, if that scenario is out there by, you know, ten, twenty, or fifty businesses, let's put them on a list. So that's a project. It's not going to be a decision today. But Greg, how do you see proceeding with that?
Why don't we, I think, I think I understand what you're, the direction you're setting. And I think Dan and I can work through that and come up with, I've got a couple of ideas. And like you said, we've done, a lot of the research is, or a lot of it's been done already. And I think we might have that data. We need to circle back with COIC. And possibly even with the chambers and get their input.
I would talk to the chambers. They, I've been talking to them for months. They know their local community. They know who has borrowed every possible dime they could possibly borrow to get through this. And they've kept as many people working, you know, when it was, it was really tough out there. So the chambers clearly are very connected with their community. And I'm already hearing stories about people who didn't go get healthcare. And one of them on our list right now is that Ronald McDonald House.
Let's stay focused on the chambers.
Yeah, but I mean, that's in that list. And I don't know why it's right there, because I feel like that's maybe a different story.
So do you support that, just kind of putting out the call for the existing knowledge on the ground?
Yeah, and I also want to, I want to sort some of the structure questions that we're, that we're having right now. Because I, what I had gathered from our previous discussion was, the chambers know the businesses. They know who didn't get money and why. And they can, they can help, they can help in the design of the solicitation. But COIC has the comprehensive lists, has run solicitations in the past, has the fiscal administrative capacity. I mean, you know, like the Sun River Chambers said, you know, we want to help, we want to help get the money out there, but we don't want to be writing checks. So I, that's the structure that I see, that COIC will administer the program. The chambers will be involved in the design of the program and the outreach. And then, you know, COIC will move the, will make the money move. And so I just want to kind of
I agree.
Put that out as a formal, a formal concept. Because in my mind, that's, that was the biggest question about business assistance and ARPA that we had to, that we had to deal with.
With that discussion, does that give you enough guidance? And we can help too. I mean, we know who to call, each chamber and the COIC.
Yeah, we have all that information. I think we've got good direction. Does that sound good, you?
Yeah, I think in general, you know, if we go through the COIC, then they would just need to, they would be our subrecipient. And then they would be dispersing checks to other subrecipients, the businesses. And those businesses would have to provide some sort of gross revenue loss due to pandemic. Not quite sure on the timeline if that would be a monthly or annually thing there. We're still, this is the interim Treasury final rule. We'll have the final rule on July sixteenth, and there could be a couple tweaks or a little bit more guidance. So we'll know that.
Yeah, and we started off with the scenario. It's that kind of long-term membership organizations that definitely can show a drop in revenue over a twelve-month period, and they just didn't quite qualify for those emergency efforts that we were doing in the past.
And do Greg and Dan, do you guys need a dollar amount right now, or?
I would say, why, why don't we do a little homework first, and then we can come back to you. Again, this is a, we have a longer term to distribute these funds. It doesn't have to be done today. Gives a chance to do a little bit of work.
I mean, because I do feel like giving applicants some, some kind of quantitative sense is helpful. But that could come in the form of, we have five million dollars potentially to distribute. Or it could come in the form of, you know, you are allowed to apply for up to this much, and we just see how many we get. And, you know, whether we can accommodate them all.
Let's start with that one and a half million dollar placeholder like we talked about.
Right.
And then see if that's in the right ballpark.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
And I think, well, yeah, I don't know. We'll see what comes out of it.
Well, I know that Eric and Ann and Don and, or Dan and Judy would all, would love to hear from you because they really do know their communities.
And we're talking about the last year. So that's, you know, these are catching up to what the effects of COVID.
Didn't you say as of twenty twenty-one, though, March third, twenty twenty-one? So it's really.
So, and I think we'll need to look into it a little bit more. But my understanding is for public funds that would be used for a government, potentially a nonprofit, it would be to March third. But if the subrecipient then is a private business, it could go back to the beginning of the pandemic if they can show.
So March of twenty twenty, then. Okay, all right, because I, okay, thank you.
So you mentioned Ronald McDonald House.
Yeah, that's there. And you know what? I just heard from someone I know dearly that they're having a major surgery that they didn't have. They didn't see their doctor during the fifteen months of COVID, no, no access to healthcare, had to get their insurance straightened around. And I know the Ronald McDonald Houses are wonderful, and it's in that list. And I think it should maybe be moved somewhere on its own. It's, you know, the hundred thousands with the, listed with the businesses. And I feel like that's part of healthcare, providing for housing for people. I mean, these are people that come into our community that probably don't live in Deschutes County. But, you know, the program is, it's an outstanding program.
Sure, we could, we could move that to services to disproportionately impacted communities. I know they do a lot of work with child, children, and also Public Health, Section One, one point six, medical expenses are covered too. So they could probably fit in either one of those if that's what they're proposing.
Well, and I would support, so this is kind of picking off things from our list. And I would support that a hundred thousand dollar request at this time in support of healthcare. And just like Commissioner Dare mentioned, you know, deferred healthcare issues that are out there from the pandemic. And this is just another one of those, you know, confidence builders. Here's, here's the dollars. We're not holding you on the list for a long period of time. So.
Are you making a motion?
I, sure, I'll make the motion. So support Ronald McDonald House charities in their request of one hundred thousand dollars.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion or thoughts? As I say, I know this is going to trigger requests in the community, but that's where we're at.
I mean, I, I definitely see the value of this project, but I, I'm not sure if it meets the kind of. I mean, there's a lot of projects in this list, and I. This is one I would prefer to consider more with the, with the, with the mass of proposals than, you know, than kind of among our very small handful of urgent, community urgent right projects. But. Yeah, but it, you know, I'm, I'm one vote in.
Yeah.
It's two tenths of one percent, two point five.
But they, they add up. I mean, the, the, I do think we are going to get a flood of interest in these dollars. You know, the childcare sector, the fact, you know, the need in this community.
I want to get to childcare sector.
The need in this community.
We're not there yet.
And what we've got, you know, we've, we've heard from two people, you know, two organizations so far. I mean, there is going to be, there should be a flood of proposals.
Childcare next.
Right, okay.
With a motion and a second, call them for the vote. Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Again, I, it's not that I don't think that this is a good project, but I don't, I don't want to consider it right now.
And chair votes yes. So as I say, I've just seen, it's pretty much the same, I almost come to the same conclusion. But I'd like to kind of take some of these off the list, I guess is my thought, you know. So at this time, how about we talk about childcare?
If I could, so the record's clear on that. Was that an abstention or a no vote by Commissioner Chang? It was kind of unclear. And Sharon will be needing to know that.
I guess an abstention.
There you go.
Again, I, I, I'd like to consider the proposal later. I'm not, I'm not saying no to it, but I just don't want to say yes to it right now.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. Let's talk about childcare.
And I'm sorry, before we go to childcare, there is a, another strand of the business assistance that, or in my mind, it's a strand of the business assistance that, that we might want to consider right now, which is there, I, you know, we've all discussed how, how important it was that there were essential workers who, who were showing up to do their job during, you know, during the heat of the pandemic and keeping our economy running, keeping food on the table in, in our communities' families. And if we wanted to, that there was, you know, there's opportunities to do essentially like a reward, or, you know, a premium for some of those essential workers, you know, retroactively. And I think that that would have to come through the businesses that employ them. So my question is, if we're talking about a business assistance package, do we want to have like this other category that that is, that allows businesses to seek funds to provide retroactive premium pay to essential workers who, you know, did so much to keep our community running during the pandemic? And if so, then maybe that could be something that is woven into the negotiation, discussions with COICs. So they know that they need to design this other, other program too at the same time.
I, businesses, whether they were, they weren't, people are making choices real time. I think that's a sticky situation if we try to define who was more heroic than the next person. So I don't, I just don't see how that would even flow. I don't understand that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly how it'd be structured either. But I know that it is, it was sort of one of the specifically called-out eligible uses of these funds. And I'm pretty sure that there's people around the country who are figuring it out, who hopefully we could learn from.
I would like more information on that. Honestly, I believe it was, there was a bill in the legislature which did not get funding. And so for, I saw that, it might have been a union workers or something that were thinking they were going to get some funding, and they didn't. So maybe some more information. But yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting. You know, like I always, you know, those Safeway workers, they were there every day, you know. And yet, they were there dealing with, what, four hundred people, four hundred strangers a day. And I always felt that they were so vulnerable with, really, they had a little Plexiglas, that was it. So, you know, I would maybe, you know, like more information. What, is somebody else in another state doing something really? But then again, when you take it by the, what is it? Then, let's say there's eighty thousand workers in Deschutes County that were working. What do you do? How much do you give them? It gets really, really, really small. Remember that one grant that we had? And people thought they were going to get twenty thousand, and they got twenty-five hundred? You know, when you take the number, it really minimizes what the effect is. So it might, we might have a better use. I mean, I do recognize that we, what, have five hundred new billionaires in the country after COVID? Because of course, the really rich got even richer, and that was really not quite right.
I mean, even if you, like, I don't know what the numbers would look like in terms of, you know, people who would qualify and, you know, what kind of money they would get. But I mean, just, just saying to somebody, you worked through the entire pandemic and put yourself in, in places where you were at much higher risk than the rest of us. Here's two hundred and fifty or five hundred bucks, just to recognize that. I think that that has, you know, it actually has financial impact for those people. And it has a whole lot of symbolic recognition impact as well.
And just, I would say that, oh, Commissioner, I would say premium pay is, is eligible for both public and private sector employees. It kind of maxes out at thirteen dollars an hour over what they were being paid, or twenty-five thousand as an aggregate. There are some other complications as well in terms of looking at average pay. If, if that was, if that premium pay was to exceed a hundred and fifty percent of the organ average pay, I think per the Bureau of Labor, then we would need to make available publicly, you know, why those people are even getting funded more than that, as far as I can tell from the guidance. So that, that is an option, though, just generally speaking.
I mean, and I would also just circle back to the labor shortage and hiring challenges we're facing in the region. And also the massive, massive quit rate that's kind of surging across the country. This could be an opportunity for a business who that, that, you know, opens intermittently or throughout the pandemic to, you know, do, you know, to, to make a nice gesture for their workers, which would help them retain those workers instead of them walking, because there's so many other job opportunities right now. So this is, I mean, this is something that the businesses who chose to partner with us in this could really benefit from.
Yeah, so I need more definition. I don't even understand that concept. I mean, I think of the small businesses that, you know, I mean, just people providing, you know, fuel and I can't help it, but cell phone service, you know, my wife's a small business. And I, yeah. I don't, it looks, it's looking backwards and trying to pick out. Yeah, I don't know. The terminology on that one doesn't even come to mind.
And the business assistance, assistance we're talking about is looking backwards too. But.
We'll get some more information and come back to you next time.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay. So I was proposing childcare.
Yes, let's go to childcare. I do believe we have a desert of childcare here, and clearly a desert. And you know, the county actually did change that zoning, what was that, a couple of years ago? We did that as fast as we could. Thank you very much, Nick Leelak and the Building Department, because, you know, and today we're still, it's only worse. So.
So there's a request by Little Kits Program, which is Ben Chamber and OSU. In fact, yeah, could you help us with the spreadsheet about the line items associated with healthcare, I mean childcare?
Sure.
So just to put it in context.
Yeah, so just the, if you start at the top, if you're looking at page four, if you start at the top, you have the shaded category, service to disproportionately impacted communities. There's, that's one of seven categories that's outlined in the reporting guidance.
Let's make sure we're on the, so I'm.
No, I think we're on page two for childcare.
Yeah, I'm looking at a spreadsheet that was in my inbox earlier.
Says.
It says eligible.
The bottom half of page two.
Yeah.
But that's really not.
ArpaList.exe.
Oh, but it's kind of like out of number.
Yeah, there's, there's different categories. So there's a page one for, for each category. So.
So, so let me explain the spreadsheet first.
Yeah, so that, let's make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, so just on the eligible project list, just using that as an example, but it applies in both cases. So the shaded area, public health, that's the first category. And, and those are, there's about seven categories that are outlined in the federal guidance that basically say, these are your eligible expenses. So what we did is we went through all of those eligible, all of the expenses and fit them into the reporting categories that we know we'll have to eventually report on anyway. So they gave us a target, and that's where we're meeting that. So the first line item is one of those seven categories. Then the next bolded line items are simply subcategories that fall underneath public health. And then underneath that are the project titles. So in this case, the first one is higher-rated HVAC filters for county facilities. And then the next indentation underneath that is, is, we went back through all of the email submissions we've received and pulled synopses of where we could of each of those projects that would explain it enough to have the conversation here with you today. Those would be listed underneath that. So that's, that's the flow. So you're looking for the project title and project explanation, which would be the third and fourth indent.
So then you mentioned page four, and I found a page two, just like Commissioner Dare said.
So it's, it's in the top of the program.
There's two separate.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different numbers. Yeah, there's all kinds of different numbering systems.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So look at the one that says eligible requests up in the upper right-hand corner, eligible.
Backside.
Page four in that bundle.
Yeah, and then if you flip to the fourth page, is Little Tykes Learning and Child Center Phase One Bend for a million dollars. And there's a short description of what that is and who's.
And that was the page I was on, it's just, it says page two to me, yeah. Okay, thank you. So Healthy Childhood Environments, childcare is what we're talking about then, correct? There's one, two, three, four items referring to Little Kits Early Learning and Childcare Center, Phase One, two.
Okay, so the School of Enrichment Support is actually on the to-be-determined eligibility list. That was somebody who has spent a lot of money on their childcare in the community and saw what we were doing. And I know they sent their letter in and I appreciate that they were paying attention because they've clearly been impacted, I think. Didn't their numbers have to go down in half or something? I mean, it was really significant and they've spent a lot of money. So, but they have not been determined yet if we can help them at all.
That's right.
Okay, all right.
Well, we're just determining eligibility. And I mean, to reemphasize my point that people are going to come out of the woodwork. My impression is that the School of Enrichment heard about this through someone who I was talking to about it. So, you know, like, I talked to someone, they talked to the School of Enrichment, and then the School of Enrichment started asking questions. So I mean, they represent, I mean, you know, their story is extremely important. But I have no idea how many businesses like that there are in our community that, you know, were adversely impacted by COVID and who are providing incredibly important childcare slots in our community. And so, yeah, so this category in particular, you know, I support us making some early investments, but also just really emphasizing to the community that, you know, we're still holding back the bulk of the money and we want to, you know, we want to surface the best projects in our community and then be able to select among those and not just make awards to the folks who are savvy enough to have heard about the fact that the county has $38 million of ARPA money.
So for childcare, I am supportive of working with Ben Chamber and OSU Cascades. I would ask that they take the responsibility, so this is, we haven't, I'm trying to have this conversation and I don't know how to get down to it, but they take some responsibility for home-based, small, home-based childcare, registered childcare, which my understanding is you can have more children in a home-based setting. And then the education center, which is just what we're talking about. So if the effort by Ben Chamber, OSU Cascades, Little Kits Early Learning and Childcare Center includes outreach, just like we use COIC for businesses, this could be the path for that. There's a million-dollar ask, and I haven't been able to kind of break down and understand what's going on there. But I want to see empowered home-based child healthcare, plus those registered childcares and education centers, all be empowered. So it's a way to kind of take that group and empower everybody. I don't know if that, and I've heard, the answer is yes, when I ask questions by the effort going on, that yes, we will do some of that. But we don't know what it looks like yet.
No, we don't. And I, you know, no disrespect at all to the Ben Chamber or to OSU Cascades, who I think, you know, with this Little Kits proposal have put forward a really innovative idea and something that's, you know, something that's very worthy of piloting and seeing how it works. But I do think that there are other entities that understand the universe of childcare in our community equally as well, if not have, you know, very important and very valuable different perspectives to offer, you know? So like Neighbor Impact, that, you know, on a day-to-day basis is working with childcare. You know, there's actually, you know, like resources that are going back and forth. In my mind, it would be possibly the best partner to, for us to work with to kind of suss out like how we understand what the need is across these, you know? Because childcare, you know, it's this huge spectrum from, you know, like, you know, public agencies to private businesses, you know? You know, small scale in somebody's house to, you know, big scale, like in a, you know, in a, you know, 200, 200-child facility. You know, there's the whole church kind of piece of this that's out there. So it's a really diverse kind of sector. And so I feel like we need at least a couple of different kind of sector experts who know the whole network of people and organizations out there, helping us shape and craft this offering.
So then, you know, early childcare community meeting or roundtable meeting with us as commissioners, because we have the funding authority, Neighbor Impact at the table, you know, Ben Chamber and the work that they're doing, but also some of these home-based ones. And, you know, so, I mean, the answer's going to be yes, let's fund it, right? But what are we funding and how much? So that's going to be the kind of the catch.
I actually think my meeting with Kelly and, you know, they have been working on this issue forever. Kelly's got twins and, you know, it's amazing, here they are, the twins, mom's a twins and they've been, I feel like if we could help do the Bend Phase One with our million, they've got the million from Senator Knope, the 300,000 from City of Bend. Okay, get that funded now. And if it really is the program, it seems excellent. You know, it's training, it's training people that can go out in the community and start their own childcare, but actually do it correctly. I feel like this would be an important opportunity and then we can look at the other ones later, like in a year. But definitely with us stepping up to give them that opportunity would be amazing. Their model is great, they can have 100 kids at it and with the different size modular units. I mean, it made a lot of sense to me, what they were talking about doing. It's a great start and it's a great education and they've worked with all the people of the community. I mean, the Chamber has been working on this for a couple of years.
Yeah.
I mean, it is serious.
I would take that same conclusion, as in fund this $1 million effort, knowing that there's probably more investment to be made.
Right, but do this one and gives them an excellent opportunity because they would have the funding then in order to sign on the dotted lines, get things underway and get it sooner than later, if you're talking modular units, because I believe they have the site, the location. So, yeah, we've got to do impact that, you know, we can see. And then later on, we can look at the others. Because I hate to spend all the money, you know, here and not do something fair in Redmond.
I would support that. I think it's a really innovative approach. But it is, because it's new, it is, it's not tested. I mean, so to make the $1 million investment, you know, to, hopefully, that would allow them to do a site at COCC campus and a site at OSU campus. To get them into that, test that out, see how it works, I think is a great, is a great phased way to approach this before we, you know, sign up for this model in all the communities. And that also ensures that we will still have some millions of dollars available to put into, you know, that, again, that flood of other important projects coming that are completely different models that are going to be coming in the door.
Yeah. So you want to make that motion?
Yes.
Point of question real quick.
Sure.
Is this the one you're considering, this million dollars? Would this be an additional approval or would this come out of the 3 million placeholder from last time?
I would think it'd come out as a 3 million.
I would support that at this time. And, yeah, I mean, that's a pool that we started off with. Let's stick to that pool concept at this point in time. And it could be changed if there was a.
Yeah. That's one, that's again, the thing I want to say is, you know, if we get a flood of really, really important, good proposals, then I hope we can revisit that 3 million number. But I'd support taking it out of the 1 million. Taking the 1 million out of the 3 million kind of placeholder.
That would leave 2 million.
Correct. So.
So I move that we do the Little Kits Early Learning and Childcare Center Phase One for Bend of 1 million, which would give them that opportunity to start that investment, considering they have 1 million from Senator Knope, 300,000 from the City of Bend, and doing the modular unit with an operating center.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I do ask that we get good feedback about, is there, because the answer's been yes, but let's get clarity on, you know, other home-based efforts, the registered childcare and education centers. You know, how much of an effort and outreach and is there any support for those by making this investment? So this is an ask to, as I say, Ben Chamber and OSU Cascades in this project. So we'll have to do some learning on that. But, yeah, with that, anything else? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I personally did like home-based with my kids and I always thought that was a really good way to go. So I'm glad to hear that you're saying that. And, you know, and then if the churches are, you know, doing childcare. I mean, I know we definitely are, we're, it's lacking and then I know there's been a lot of problems, so.
And I'll vote yes also.
Good.
Will you hold on to that, Dave?
I was, yeah.
I was waiting there. Okay, well, so that puts direction to that. As I say, there's a lot of questions. My understanding, and I don't know if we've all been invited, there's a tomorrow morning and online, I think this was from Annette Leba, post-session childcare 21 session debrief and local investments. So there's a meeting tomorrow morning.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, so it's on my calendar, 8:30 to 10:00 tomorrow, so. Because remember, the childcare early learning division has been separated from the high, the HECC, whatever it is, Higher Education Committee or Courtney Committee. So there's big changes at the state level also.
Yes, as I told Representative Zika, who was behind that, I said, oh my gosh, the state can't even answer the phone correctly. And to add another department, I'm like, oh my gosh.
I sent an email weeks ago to the director trying to just get some information about Central Oregon, no response.
Yeah, shockingly, no response.
And Neighbor Impact, absolutely. They are up to speed, they have resources and deep knowledge about a lot of these in Central Oregon. So there is a lot of work to be done there.
One other partner that I think could potentially, that, I know that during the early stages of COVID that the previous board of commissioners heard from a lot was the ESD as well. So I know that they have, so I mean, if we're kind of putting together a small nimble panel, you know, like it doesn't have to be everybody, but, you know, like there is value in putting, you know, a handful of good brains around a table. If we're putting together a small nimble panel, I would, you know, I'd encourage us to consider pulling someone from the ESD as well.
Maybe Head Start will consider moving out of Betsy Johnson, because I think they're pretty limited on their numbers there. There may be a more welcoming spot in Redmond somewhere else. I don't know. Remember how small that is? It's actually a pretty small location. So I don't know.
Neighbor Impact would be able to give us the insights.
Right. That'd be good to know.
So for myself, going back to page one, just this one item jumps out at me, the UV sanitizer for the jail. Is that, has that been invested in? Is that a reimbursed item or is that a future purchase? Do we know?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, that just jumps out as kind of a no-brainer if we want to approve that line item. I'll make a motion if that's fine. So $40,000 for a UV sanitizer for the jail. And as I say, they might have ordered that already, knowing that it had to come either way, but we could justify these funds.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, okay. Any other thoughts, discussion? So calling for the vote, Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So just kind of knocking some of those off and as I say, is there anything else to put direction to today or to have bigger discussion?
I'd like to raise the Managed Camp match proposal from the City of Bend. At this point, you know, they are negotiating a number of potential sites for that. I've said, you know, I would really like to know exactly where, which site it's going to happen in before we commit funds to it. But, you know, as we know, you know, when you're talking about property and real estate, you know, a lot of times negotiations have to be done in executive session and confidentially. But the City of Bend and the Emergency Homeless Task Force, I think, are at a point where they have a clear line on some locations and a clear concept of what the managed camp would look like. And they do, it would be greatly beneficial to have a commitment of matching funds for the 1.5 that they've committed already, to be able to sign on the dotted line and proceed with some of these proposals.
So that's an official ask, is that correct? I mean, that was from.
They sent us a letter, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I've acknowledged that and I spoke to some of the councilors about that. My thought is, and I think we've crossed this just a little bit, is really putting, what's going to be the culture around these things? As in, people have different ideas about what that means, you know, seeing it on the ground for the first time, being able to drive past or walk past or be on-site. The vision in people's heads is probably very different, you know? That's the only thing I worry about right now. It's like, oh yeah, don't worry about it, I know exactly what it is. But it's only in people's ideas at this time. So I'm just saying, let's step into it gingerly and the answer's yes, because this is exactly the conversation I had with city councilors. Yeah, well, let's figure out what we're going to do here and go do it. But getting the definition of what we're talking about is going to be the next step. I would support, possibly supporting it three different times for $500,000 over a period of time, just to kind of have that little bit of opportunity to have the next discussion about, well, I sure didn't think it was going to be that. Or, man, that's the greatest thing ever and the community really appreciates that we've done this. So that's my only thought, is possibly stepping into this into three pieces over the next couple of years, you know? Because some of the push and pull is going to be, how much reoccurring cost is there? You know, this place is great as long as you pay for, you know, there's a lot of definitions about what needs to be funded.
Yeah, no, there are a lot of questions to be answered.
Yeah.
But.
See, when you think that there are 85 people, at least on Huddle Road, it went from 35 in January, per my counter, to 85 the other day. Yeah, okay, so we're talking 60 households. How many dollars has California spent on their homeless problem? And it's only gotten worse.
Well, and that's another part of this. What's going to be the culture around this? Does this mean, welcome to this location temporarily, please, you know?
I mean, yeah, this location doesn't even take Huddle and put it. And, you know, and then we've got the people in the forest that we've got to get out, so.
And I absolutely agree with that. There's a lot of community expectation to do something and let's do it.
And in my mind, the way to think about these managed camps is as a pilot. I mean, this is, you know, you don't want to build a 300-person managed camp because, I mean, that becomes, you know, that'll be like a site of chaos. I mean, you want to do these things at more of a human scale so that, you know, you have people who are gathered, who are, you know, can, you know, recognize each other's, recognize and respect each other's kind of boundaries and. know, recognize each other's, recognize and respect each other's kind of boundaries and dignity, and, you know, act accordingly. And that's much harder to do with, with huge groups of people. So that, that's part of the reason why the City of Bend is proposing smaller sites, and maybe multiple, you know, multiples of them as opposed to one, you know, enormous camp. And I, I think that that's actually, the, I, I think I shared through, through staff, the, the document that was put together by people from, it was, it was either Seattle University or.
It was the University of Seattle Law School.
Right. You know, that, that had, you know, some lessons learned about this, and that, that was one of the, you know, one of the, one of the strategies, was to kind of make these human scale, so that you, you could actually kind of build some community among the people who were, who were there at any given point in time, and, you know, people would, you know, have respect for each other and, and, you know, behave, you know, be on their better behavior.
Well, and the reality is, when we live in a, in a elevation and a climate, it is not conducive to haphazard living conditions. It's hot days, cold nights, hard winters. You know, we've got to acknowledge that, and, you know, people are setting up and taking their risks, expecting, you know, or, I don't know what they're expecting, but worst-case scenarios are out there. So, yeah, the culture around what we're doing here. So as I say, I would support possibly breaking this into thirds, if they, if there's any conversation of supporting that idea. And just to kind of step into this gingerly, and there may be other investments in other areas.
I know. So if we're talking like 1,000 homeless in, like, just, in this area, so and we're at 60 in a unit, how many millions of dollars is that going to take to, and when, I, I don't know if I told the story last week, shared it, but someone I, medical person had given someone homeless some water and said, gee, where are you from? And the man said, Pennsylvania. And he goes, and she goes, excuse me, but why are you in Oregon? And he goes, well, you know, if you come to Oregon, you get your services and you can have all the drugs you want. And that's what she was told. So we, we have a, we have a huge number already of homeless here, and are we going to be getting more? And, you know, definitely, I believe that the fact that we don't have mental health hospitals any longer, we haven't had them for decades, there's 130 million that the state has in funding, we actually need more permanent housing for people that are mentally ill. And we have, we've, we've got to, you know, and people say, well, it's not legal, Patty. And I go, you know what, it might not be legal, but something has got to change. We have got to bring some kind of hospitalization back, some kind of permanent housing for those people that really are seriously mentally ill. They just, it's not safe to have them out, you know, it's just, it's not safe for them, and it's not safe for the other 195,000 people that live here.
Yeah, no.
So how do we get that, that, that housing here when they just added 48 beds in Junction City? Now Junction City doesn't help us at all. The state hospital has been full for years, right? There's no beds there. So how do we get something over here on this side of the mountain? And I think we've got to, we've got to work on it.
And, and, I mean, you know, institutional beds are one thing, but I mean, when we were talking with Housing Works the other day about their, their vision for, for Connors and 27th, you know, when they said, you know, permanent supportive housing for some of the hardest-to-house people, they are talking about, they are talking about a, a place where people who have those kinds of high needs and high challenges could live and also have a meaningful wraparound services, which, again, is not like an institutional bed, but, you know, honestly, it might be, you know, for the right, the right kind of person who is, who has men, mental health challenges and who's homeless, it might be better. So.
It might be a lot safer than having them out in the forest somewhere where they can hunt to death or.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, so, I mean, that is, absolutely. So that's another, that's another type of investment we can be thinking of making. There, there are many faces of homelessness, and there are people who, there are people we can serve in a Bethlehem Inn, high-barrier type such situation. There's people we could serve in a, in permanent supportive housing. There's people we could serve in a low-barrier shelter-type situation, like Shepherd's House runs. There's, and just given the numbers of, of homeless that we have in our region, there, there's, there's, there's not enough under-roof space for all those people. So the, these managed camps are, in my mind, a far better alternative than having people, you know, informally choose places to set up homeless encampments where they're not authorized and, and, you know, generally, they're not, also not very welcomed either.
So is there a motion for some support of financial? I mean, I mentioned the number, but I.
I said the 500,000, yeah. I, I would, I would go with that, because if you look at it, if you extrapolate this, 60 households in a camp, and let's say we have 1,000 people that need to go to these camps, that is 17 camps, and that's $51 million, if you're talking about $3 million.
Supporting a $500,000 today means that we're, we're committed, we're engaging the conversation, and what's the vision on the ground. So I'm supportive of that. It sounds like Commissioner Dare's.
Uh, yeah.
If I could, if I could just make the, the, you know, a, a different proposal of at least collapsing it into two, you know, if you wanted to do 750 and 750, just so we, our, our partner, the City of Bend, knows that we are seriously committed and we are part of this with them, as opposed to, you know, watching them and, you know, kind of, like, almost retroactively approving what they're doing. I, I would, I would, I would like this.
That's fine. I support that. Yeah, I mean, so that's.
Okay, I do want to remind everyone in the room that the City of Bend gave 70,000 for the stabilization center. 70,000. They were reas.
Are you referring to people that stand on the sidelines and watch what we're doing?
Right. Yeah, no, I'm just repeating what they actually had done, because Holly had gone to them several times. That's all the funding we got from the City of Bend, yet we, we heard the numbers the other day. The City of Bend is actually using our stabilization center quite significantly, and we are, we are, like, we are behind that. We're, we're the ones that worry about that and keeping that funded.
Do you, do you want to build a culture of partnership?
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Where they, where they will.
So I'm just saying.
Do you want to build a culture of partnership where they will respond to our requests to invest in the stabilization center? Or do you want to?
I'm just reminding.
Perpetuate the dynamic that has existed for the last couple of years.
Well, I just thought it was really interesting, because they have really used it, and it was 70,000, and I know Holly went there a couple of times, and I was, it was really, it was disappointing.
Okay. I'm going to challenge you to show me general fund investment from the county in the stabilization center to get it up and running. There is none. So 70,000 is actually a whole lot better than what we did.
What about the entire staff?
The entire staff that are, that are, were part of our staff already, that we moved to a new location, the, the entire staff that is primarily supported with federal and state money, that is not a general fund contribution.
Okay, well, so we were talking about 750.
So let's, yeah, so let's talk about building a partnership relationship with the City of Bend, so that they will co-invest with us in important projects moving forward. I'll make a motion that we allocate $750,000 right now with a option or a consideration to make an additional $750,000 at a later point in time in a managed camp partnership with the City of Bend.
You can second it.
I'll second it, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing that, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much. And, you know, these are the, the topics, you know, and if there's underlying concepts like that are out there, that, it needs to be discussed. I mean, these, these, there's not a lot of communication at some, at some elected official levels.
I 100% agree, and I would encourage us to reach out to the City of Bend, to do quarterly or semi-annual joint council commission meetings, like we do with all of the other cities, which I believe that the county has done in the past, but.
We had a real, one in person, we did.
They haven't done in two, two and a half, three years. I mean, I don't, I don't know the exact specifics on that, but those kinds of sessions are a great opportunity.
Okay.
Okay, well, there, there goes that.
So, yeah, these are challenging times.
We just lost our room.
So let's, let's take a little break. It's 11:20, and we're going to take a break, and this, we'll come back before our lunch recess.